Call to order, the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, November 16, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harlecker, please call the room.
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
Here.
Commissioner Heikle.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Here.
And Chair Schwartz.
Here.
Let be noted that Commissioner Schmalki is not here tonight. Thank you. Our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Casey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the minutes of our October 19, 2017, meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Heikle, second by Stevens to accept the minutes. Any corrections? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Our first order of new business this evening, Planning Case 17-35, a conditional use permit for the semi tractor sales and service facility, RJ Ryan, 9400 Evergreen Boulevard. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Commissioner and Chair Schwartz, back in January, excuse me, this year, the Commission granted site plan approval for 59,300 square foot semi tractor sales and service facility. Staff recently realized that a conditional use permit should have been processed concurrently with a site plan review, and to address the issue, the Commission is being asked tonight to consider this application for the conditional use permit. Project's currently under construction, and the pertinent issues were addressed during site plan review. Staff has compared the project with the conditions for the conditional use permit, the standards, and finds that the application is consistent with those standards. Here's the site, here at the end of Evergreen and 610. Here's the site plan, just to remind everybody what is out there, what's being constructed. The building is here, with the service facility here, the office showroom in this area here, two entrances off of Evergreen, with parking surrounding the buildings, Strongwater Pond down at this end, and there's two wetland areas over here, adjacent to Evergreen. Landscape plan, you see the ponds is enhanced over here with landscaping, as well as are the wetland areas here, with street trees and overstory trees are allowed. There is a large easement, utility easement going through here for the power line, and that really limits what can be done in that area. It was a very significant limitation for the development of this site. As you can see, they put the building right up to the edge of the power line. There's also another drainage and utility easement that runs along the side here. Just a reminder, here's what the elevations were. So this is the office showroom area here, with the maintenance, the service doors here and here, and then this is the other end elevation. With that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission move to approve the conditional use permit, with the conditions that, number one, the project complies with Title 11, and number two, the conditions of the site plan approval in Planning Case 16-30 are also complied with. That's to tie the conditional use permit with the site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions from Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Harlecker, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Casey.
Is this pretty much housekeeping, kind of just picking up some loose ends?
Correct.
For the whole project? Okay.
No other questions? We'll open a public hearing in this matter, Planning Case 17-35, a conditional use permit. Anyone present wish to speak to this public hearing? Last call, anyone wish to speak on this case? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Commission. Well, I think it's, as has been said, it's just basically housekeeping, the clean up something that we didn't include in the original plan, or the original case, and I have no problem supporting this.
So, in Planning Case 17-35, I move that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit for the semi tractor sales and service facility with those following two conditions. Second.
Motion by Stevens, second by Casey. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. This is a decision by the Planning Commission and can be appealed to the City Council within 10 days if someone so chooses. Second case under new business this evening, Planning Case 17-34, a registered land survey at 9940 Ibis Street, Rick Byer Construction. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Commissioner and Chair, this is a registered land survey to split this parcel here. It's about one and a half acres, and there are two lots, Ibis Street here, with 99 here. Here's a certificate of survey of the property. Lot B is up front here, with frontage on Ibis. Lot A is a flag lot located behind it. There is an existing house and garage on track to be. Parcel A is about almost 41,000 square feet, and the flag portion of the site, this area back here, is about 34,000 square feet. It's got 25 feet of frontage here, code requires that it be 20 feet. Parcel B, as I noted, does contain the original homestead on this property. The applicant has indicated that they plan on demolishing the existing house. The status of the garage is still up in the air. That'll be determined at the time of building permit. Work with a building official to try to come up with a mechanism to allow the garage to stay while the new house is being constructed. You can't have, code does not allow just to have an accessory structure on a piece of property without a principal structure. The lots comply with dimensional requirements of the LDR2 zoning district, which are 10,800 square feet lot size, lot width of 80 feet, and a minimum depth of 135 feet. Park dedication, the original lot was planted back in 1941, as far as Wooddale Park. Park dedication fees were not collected back then, so at this time, park dedication in the amount of $2,000 per lot will be assessed and due at the time that they pick up the registered land survey for recording. Engineering comments, there were no significant engineering issues. They do show proposed drainage and utility easements on the certificate of survey. This is a copy, this is what the registered land survey looks like, this is what will get recorded at the county. The drainage and utility easements on the property lines will have to be recorded as separate documents at the time that they take this RLS up to the county to get recorded. With that, staff is recommending that the Funding Commission move to approve the proposed registered land survey, with the conditions that it complies with Title 11, all engineering comments are addressed, park dedication fees in the amount of $4,000 paid prior to leasing the RLS for recording. The front setback for Lot A, back here, will be measured from the rear property line of Lot B, which is this line here, and the proposed drainage and utility easement shown on the certificate of survey must be recorded along with the RLS. And I'll answer any questions, and the applicant is also in the audience tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Casey.
Mr. Harlecker, so you'd say a flag lot, Track A is a flag lot? What exactly does that mean?
Well, Commissioner Casey and other Commissioners and Chair, it's just a term that describes kind of the shape of the lot. You've got the larger flag portion back here, and then it's got a narrower piece that actually provides a frontage on onto the city street.
Is that for driveways?
For the driveway, correct.
Kind of access? Okay, I see what you mean now. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker? Seeing none, we'll open a public hearing in Planning Case 17-34, registered land survey for 9940 Ibis Street. Anyone here wishing to speak at the public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there anything the petitioner would like to add? No? All right. All right, Commission, thoughts?
No? Okay.
Okay.
In Planning Case 17-34, I recommend with the Planning Commission to approve the proposed registered land survey with the following conditions, the four, or five that were stated previously. Second.
Motion by Stevens, second by Casey. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission, and will be heard by the City Council at their December 5 meeting. All right, next, we have Planning Case 17-24, a revised building elevation for Sutton Honda Gateway Commerce Center. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, back in August, the Planning Commission approved site plan and building elevations for Sutton Honda. The approval included specific designs for the exterior elevations. Since their approval, Honda Corporate Design has reviewed the elevations that the Planning Commission approved, and are asking that elevations be changed so that they are more consistent, comply with corporate Honda's design intent. The changes primarily involve changes in the amount of stone on the elevations, and then the elimination of the blue ACM panels. And what I'd like to do is just go through the changes on each elevation, and then answer questions of the applicant. The architect is also here in the audience to speak to the Commission on this item. Here's the site plan, and when I reference elevations, this elevation here is referenced as the north, faces Gateway Drive. This elevation here is considered the front. This one here is the south, kind of faces Hanson Boulevard, and then the east faces the McDonald's. Here's the floor plan of the facility. Again, it's like you've got the front here, the north facing Gateway Drive, this is kind of the, this is the service drop-off area where people come in and drop their cars off for servicing. On the east elevation, these are detailed doors for cleaning the cars, and then you've got the car wash here. And then the south elevation provides the main access into the larger service area, and then area here, which is where customers can pick up the new cars. Here's the front elevation. What we'll look at tonight is a, the drawing here that shows the proposed changes, and then the, following this will be a comparison where you can see the approved elevations next to the proposed elevations. And on the front here, we're looking at eliminating the blue panels at this location, and then down here, adding some stone along the base, and then eliminating the stone here. The stone that's highlighted in yellow stays or is new, the stone that is not is the stone that's being proposed to be removed. And this is the approved elevation, where you can see the stone kind of wraps around the corner here. You've got the blue panels there and there. Then this is the elevation as proposed. You notice that most of the changes are occurred down in this corner here, and then the panels up here. I guess a question for the Commission, would you like to take each elevation on its own? Or would you like to see them all and then have discussions after you've seen all the elevations?
I would say see them all.
See them all on their own.
Okay. The next one is the north elevation, this is the one that faces Gateway Drive. This component here is the service area where customers drive in, and here, then the exit is here, this is where they drop off their vehicles for servicing. This glass here is the edge of the showroom. Here's the, I don't know what you'd call it, the Honda can that extends out past the front. The blue panels are, will be eliminated here, and then on the end of the car service area here, in the middle, and then down on the other end. The stone, this area here, 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 and then in the middle here, and then down at this end will be removed. They are adding two small sections of stone at the base, this location here and here. Again, here is the approved elevation, with the blue panels up there, up there, and the corners, and down here. And then this is the proposed elevation with the Honda Corporate changes. You can see the panels are gone, and across the car wash here, as well as some of the stone on the corners that kind of function to anchor the corners of the components that stick out in the main body of the building. This is the south elevation, faces Hanson Boulevard. You can see the stone around the doors here. They are adding the base here, and then down here, the blue panels here and here. This piece actually juts out from the main body of the building, and the blue panels here. And then the stone on the corners here, here, as well as here, are being removed. And here's the comparison again. You can see the stone, this kind of stays here. Missing in this location is are the panels around the window, the panels up here, and the stone at that corner, as well as the stone in here, and the blue panels up here. Finally, this is the east elevation, the side that faces McDonald's. The car wash is this section here, and these are the service doors that lead to the detailing bays. You can see the blue panels here, here, and then down at this end, are all proposed to be removed. And then the stone that anchors this corner here. These are the other doors for the service drop-off area. These three doors are here. Then also removing stone down here. Then they're adding stone on the base here and here. I guess at this point, we can go through and discuss the changes, agree your comments on the changes, and then the applicant maybe can address questions that you may have as to the extent of the changes and why they're being proposed.
All right, Commission. Do you want to start with any particular elevation? My initial thoughts on all of them is the stone, I think, is a very intricate part of the entire planned unit development, and by removing the stone, we're losing a good portion of what ties this building in with the other buildings within the planned unit development. We've required stone for the other buildings, and to remove the amount of stone that they're talking about removing, and just having that small band around the bottom, in my estimation, isn't even going to be seen a good majority of the year because of snow. I don't know how high that band is, but looking, comparing it to the height of the doors, I don't believe it's probably more than, at the most, maybe two feet. And I'm afraid that the snow buildup in the wintertime is going to totally cover up that portion of the stone, that you're not even going to see that at all. At least, that's my initial concerns right now. Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Chair.
Commissioner Heikle, and then Stevens.
I kind of tend to agree with that. It's going to make the building considerably less attractive, and make it more, not stand out as much as it should, and then, in addition, removing all the panels, take away the, kind of the distinctiveness of the building, and make it not as attractive as I would hope it would be.
Commissioner Stevens.
How much stone, you know, like the percentages? What are they losing percentage-wise? You know, because we have a formula that says you have to have so much glass, and so much this, and, you know, to make it unique. So what are the percentages?
Okay, yeah, Commissioner Stevens, and Commissioners and Chair, on the front elevation, they're eliminating seven and a half percent of the stone. On the north elevation, 41 percent. The east elevation is 4.8, and on the south elevation, it's 27.8.
Right, but I wanted them to hear it. So, yeah, but they, we've got the loss, but then how much, you know, are we saying that the city's recommending that we propose what they have here before the proposed changes? Does that meet or exceed the standards?
Commissioner Stevens, there isn't a, the exact amount isn't quantified in the design standards.
Okay.
When the Commission did look at this back in August, it was a consensus of the Commission that the elevations proposed at that time did meet the design standards.
Right, right.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
A question for Mr. Harlecker. Is there a sample of the stacked stone? I know previously we received a lot more graphical or of color code and specifics of what the anticipated design would look like with the blue ACM panels and such. With these changes, are there any samples or anything further to give us?
I don't know if the applicant brought samples with them tonight or not.
We all love samples.
I, no. I don't believe we have samples tonight.
Do you know how high the base?
No, we can get into that with the architect.
Yeah, I believe it's 18 inches, maybe two feet, but he can give the exact dimensions.
But I look at the north elevation at losing 41 percent, and that's huge.
That faces Gateway Drive, too.
Yes, it does.
That's pretty visible.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I would, I would look twice at these, these proposed changes. I, I think it was, I wonder who was blindsided by this, if this was coming out of Honda Corporate with anybody's knowledge in the course of less than two months? And I think it's significant. I too don't think that that lower level of stacked stone, if that's what it is going to be, stone, I don't think it compensates for the loss of real visible stone, particularly on that north elevation. And my concern would be, do we, are we lowering the bar as far as the architectural significance of that PUD in the design? Those are my thoughts.
Chair Schwartz.
Mr. Johnson.
May I ask that the Commission continue its discussion after the public hearing?
Oh.
Because usually this is sort of the questions portion, and I hear more sort of discussion, but it's before we've had a public hearing or the applicant being able to state a case to the Commission.
Certainly. Why don't we begin by having the petitioner or the applicant give a presentation if he wishes to do so, so that if anybody in the public hearing might want to address anything he might have to say. Come up to the microphone, please, and give your name.
Good evening, my name is Scott Hill. I'm the design architect for the Sutton Auto team. Thank you for reconsidering our situation this evening, Commissioners and Chair. I stand before you as kind of an arbiter at this point in time. Little back history of the project, I worked with your excellent staff, Scott Harlecker and his crew, in keeping the planning design guidelines in mind, and came up with an original design that we thought did not significantly detract from Honda Corporate's image, and went a sufficient distance to meet your planned unit development guidelines. And tonight, I stand before you somewhat corrected, and with the understanding that Honda is much more particular about their design guidelines than we anticipated. So, in essence, we're turning the crank again and giving Honda Corporate a chance to have their interpretation of the PUD requirements, and their combination of that with their design guidelines reviewed in front of you. A couple of quick questions, or answers to quick questions that were given. The belt is exactly 24 inches, so your sense of scale is right on the money. We aren't losing all of the stone in the Honda request, there is still some stone in, at some of the corner locations, so it isn't entirely going away above the belt line. The percentages, or changes, are listed in the document that you have in front of you. So I stand as an arbiter, this, at this point, expressing some of Honda Corporate's requests. So I stand as an arbiter, this, at this point, expressing some of Honda corporate's requirements. And I'm kind of like the guy in the middle between Honda corporate and your PUD guidelines. Any further questions? I'd be happy to answer them. I have one thought that came to my mind as you were listening to your discussion. In the spirit of compromise, might it be possible, as an option for Honda, to, for me to be able to go back to them and say, if all the stone were included in the original, as per the original, and even adding what they include additionally to fill out the belt line around the bottom, if all that stone was put back, plus their addition, which would be a net plus in all of the elevations for stone, would it be possible for them to consider maybe removing those accessory, the ancillary ACM panels around those corner points, just up at the top? I just wanted to present that possibly as an option that they might be able to consider from, from your standpoint. So, that's my nutshell. So if you have any questions of me?
All right, thank you, Mr. Hill. We'll hold any questions for you until after the public hearing is over. Thank you. All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in Planning Case seventeen dash twenty-four, Revised Building Elevation for Sutton Honda. Is anyone present, wish to speak to the public hearing on this matter? Anyone wish to speak at the public hearing? Saying none, we'll close the public hearing. And now, who was, had a question that we were, I think, Commissioner Stevens, you had a question at the same time as Mr. Johnson.
Well, I was just, that, that was one of the things I was going to ask is, you know, corporate is saying one thing, our city says something else. If we say no, then does it, the project go away? I mean, you know, too. So, not that, I mean, but we need to stand by what our guidelines are. And.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner, or Mr. Johnson.
Just, just to kind of provide a procedural context for that, Commissioner Stevens. If, if, for example, the Commission were to sort of deliberate and discuss, you know, I probably could live with this and whatever it is you discuss, one thing that could be done, instead of actually making a motion to deny at this point, which would then force Honda to go to the council, is if they were to agree, after you have your discussion, and say, "Look, we'll be happy to come back next month with some changes to our proposed revisions," then you could just simply continue the matter to the next meeting so that they could come back with something. I wouldn't want to try to have that negotiation happen tonight. Of course, the Commission doesn't want to approve something that isn't before them.
Right.
You'd rather see something and then go from there.
Right.
But based on what I hear from the applicant, that there might be some negotiating here, or at least they, they could go back and say, "Here's what our, the Commission has indicated." Of course, it isn't a solid, we'll, we'll approve it if it comes back this way. Of course, it's just your thoughts, and I think they know that. But they would have to waive also the sixty-day rule, because it looks like December eighth is when the decision would have to be made. And of course, the meeting is going to be past that, so they'd have to allow that to be extended. So with that in mind, you might want to deliberate towards, well, what could we live with at this point? Understanding that that doesn't lock in anything, because you don't have anything really before you to deliberate on for, you know, an alternate plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I agree with what a lot of people have said, that the stone is an important part of the design and that this is a very significant departure from the design that the Planning Commission approved. I think that the panels, the ACM panels, are also a significant part of the design that the Commission approved, in that they add texture and interesting elements to design and are a portion that is part, that's important to the PUD. So I'm not inclined personally to support either of those design changes. And I referenced, a couple months ago, there was the other dealership in this same PUD, and they wanted us to relax our view of the landscaping in that matter, and we held firm on that, and I think that was the right decision, and I think we should hold firm here, too. I think last, that here we are yet again, another month and another proposed tinkering with the Gateway Commerce PUD. And I think I've made my position on tinkering with the Gateway Commerce PUD pretty clear in that I'm against it, and I'm tired of it, and I'm not voting for it anymore. So I support the staff's recommendation that we deny the request, and I think we should stick to what the PUD is.
Any, anyone else have anything that they would like to add after that?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I would have a question for Mr. Hill. In terms of those ACM panels, are they the blue ones that sit on the corners of the building?
They are, yes. Of the respective.
Please come up to the microphone, if you're going to speak, so that the secretary can catch what you're saying, please. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Casey, they are, they're the panels on the corners of the other boxes that are part of the collection of boxes that make up the building.
And they're colored, they're the blue, the Honda blue?
They can be Honda blue, they could be a complementary gray, or maybe white, as far as, I mean, there's, colors can be selected.
Oh, I see. I thought they were designated as blue, but I was wrong.
I think the original scheme that came before you had them shown as blue. This drawing that you're looking at here today has them as more of a Leckenhoff gray color.
Okay. And they, they all are going to come down, though? That's the proposal, that they all be taken down.
That would be Honda design intent, design request, yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
If the Commission were to go along with Commissioner Stevenson's position and totally deny any changes to what we've previously approved, what do you anticipate Honda's position to be?
Disappointment. Let me read one sentence from a prior communication from Honda, just to give you an idea of what our sense of what, what their position is. This is one of the earlier change-up letters that Honda sent to us after we started the review process. Revised drawings, addressing the comments below, must be submitted with a response letter for any exception requests or justifying any items not corrected. One way to look at this is Honda has had their opportunity here this evening to turn the crank again and, and have their requested changes reviewed. I think we fulfilled that request on their, on their behalf. And whatever your response would be, were you to vote on it this evening, I think could be communicated back to Honda, is that we've gone through the process again with due consideration, and this was the result. So I, Honda's not going to go away, I don't believe, no matter what decision you come to. We're just here trying to be a little more sensitive to their design and image parameters, I think.
Did, or did you not run the plans past Honda prior to presenting them to us?
You guys got first look. So I, so the answer to that is no. Honda did not get first look. And we didn't think that the, the differentiations from Honda corporate design intent were substantial, like substantial enough to be diluting their design intent, but like I, as I mentioned earlier, I stand corrected, they're very sensitive about every aspect of what they, what they put forward, so.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I, I can understand the, the guidelines, the structure that we have before us, that we police ourselves by and the community. I see the changes also with, with the Sutton Honda plan, but I, my consideration is, is that if there's an opportunity for arbitration, better option to be presented to us the following month, like as was proposed by legal, I think that is a potential win-win situation for every, for both parties. So I would voice, my, my voice, what I'm trying to say is that I think we should delay this, extend the waiting period for it, and allow it to go to next month's meeting with a better, with a very, with a middle ground solution, addressing our requirements for the PUD. And Honda, since they are the investor, the, the brand, the company, and they have every right to push upon their dealerships, their guide, their requirements as well. So I think a potential meeting in the middle that can satisfy everyone is, is worth delaying another month.
Mr. Chair.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I defer to Commissioner Stevens.
I want to, I want to take us back before probably any of you were on the Commission, but weren't we looking at a Fridays plan that didn't go along with corporate, isn't TGI Fridays? And we, we held strong. We said, "No, this is the bottom line." And the changes that we made, corporate liked them, and they picked it up, and they started using it on some of their other businesses. So, these are our proposals, this is our PUD. Maybe the, what Honda will see when it's all finished, they'll say, "Hey, that's cool." And maybe they'll pick it up and use it in some of their other ones. I don't know. But I'm feeling that we need to stay strong to what we have already, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Yeah, I, I wholeheartedly agree with what Commissioner Stevens just said, and I would add that I'm not in favor of continuing this to next month, because the assumption in that is that another proposal that's somewhere between this and the guidelines of the PUD is still another proposal that doesn't comply with the PUD. So I'm not in favor of doing that. I, I think that if they want to come back with another proposal that's consistent with the PUD, we can look at that, but I'm not in favor of signaling to Honda that we would be okay with a design that's not consistent with the PUD.
Chair Schwartz.
Mr. Johnson.
I just wanted to clarify, I didn't mean, and I apologize if this was taken this way, I didn't mean to suggest that this, this be taken. All, all I wanted to do is respond to Commissioner Stevens as to what the procedure would be, if that's what the Commission wanted to do.
Thank you.
I, at this point, I agree with Commissioner Stevens and Commissioner Stevenson. I don't feel that I'm ready to give up either the stone or the blue panels, because as has been stated by both of them, they both give specific definition to the building. And we've previously approved them, and I don't see that there's a need to continue the discussion the next month, since it sounds like a good portion of the Commission, at least half right now, is not willing to make any changes to the plan as, as we previously approved it. There would be nothing to, to discuss for a compromise. We're satisfied with what was previously approved, too.
So, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I'm willing to, to entertain a little wiggle room, and if Honda is willing to, to come back with something that meets in the middle, I'm willing to give it one more month at this point with that suggestion. That's all up to Honda, but that would be my, where I'd stand on it.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I know we're a Commission, and we're supposed to review and go by our guidelines and such, but also, this is a negotiation, as Commissioner Casey has mentioned as well. And I think we should keep that in mind in making up our, our minds or making a decision.
Well, I, I will just, again, just point out what Commissioner Stevenson had said previously, and I, and again, agree wholeheartedly with him, is there's been far too many changes to this PUD.
That's true.
I don't know how many times we've said, "This is the last change we're going to make to this PUD." And yet, here we are, trying to make more changes to the PUD. And I'm not, I'm not in favor of making any more changes to the PUD.
And Mr. Chair, can I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to provoke emotion.
No, I just.
I want to say something that I, I feel pretty strongly about, which is that I don't think this is a negotiation.
Right.
And I, I don't think that we should consider our role as a Commission.
Negotiation.
To be in, in the business of negotiation.
No, we have rules.
You know, we have rules that we are applying, and, and I think that we should expect that people follow those rules or give very clear reasons why they're not, and we can decide whether or not we're willing to grant exceptions under, if, if we are entitled to do so under our authority. And sometimes, we're not entitled to do so. But I don't think this is a give-and-take negotiating position. I, I think that we are a Commission. So that's, I just wanted to say that.
No, and that's what I had said a couple months ago, too.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikler.
I will reiterate what I started with at the very beginning, that I think the changes that they're proposing simply make the building less than we expected. I think removing the panels, removing the brick is not necessarily a good idea, or is not a good idea. And I would maintain that we hold to what the plan was, what our original approval was.
Thank you.
So can I make a recommendation?
Commissioner Stevens.
In Planning Case, whatever, it's not written on here.
Seventeen twenty-four.
Seventeen twenty-four. I move that we deny the proposed changes to the building elevations because they are not consistent with our PUD design guidelines. With the removal of the blue ACM panels and the stone eliminates details that highlight and anchor corners of the building, add visible interests, add a variety of color and textures, and produces a better building, the facade, so.
Second.
Motion by Stevens, second by Stevenson. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I'm not comfortable voting to deny the proposed change. I guess I would be more on the line that, that we see another proposal, so.
Chair Schwartz.
Mr. Johnson.
If, if that does happen, the applicant has two choices. They can appeal this decision to the council, or they could come back in a month with yet another revision for you to consider. That is also another opportunity.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Or they could build.
That would be door number three.
No, I would say that's door number one.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes four to two with Commissioners Casey and Knoblock opposed. This is a decision by the Planning Commission and can be appealed at the City Council within ten days if you choose to do so.
Gentlemen and ladies, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next case is planning case seventeen dash thirty-three, an ordinance amendment modifying the maximum allowed attached and detached storage garage space and foundation requirements. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Commissioners and Chair. Back in June, the City Council approved an ordinance increasing the maximum square footage allowed for accessory structures. It increased it up to 2,000 square feet on lots greater than one acre and 1,600 square feet on lots less than one acre. On all lots, the amount of accessory structure square footage cannot exceed eighty percent of the finished floor area of the house. After the code was adopted, council reviewed it some more and expressed some concern that the new code reduces the maximum amount allowed for accessory structures that are less than 1,500 square feet. The old code for a thousand-square-foot Rambler, they could have had 1,200 square feet of accessory structure square footage. Under the new codes, with the eighty percent requirement, it'd be limited to 800 square feet. They were concerned that that would be essentially penalizing some of the residents in the city. To address that concern, council suggested that the code be changed so that the proposed eighty percent requirement of the finished floor area applies only to attached garage space. Detached garage would not be subject to that eighty percent requirement. They didn't want to change the total allowed, just the fact that the eighty percent would only apply to the attached garage. They didn't want an attached garage that was overwhelming the house. There are some potential impact of that, since the eighty percent will only apply to attached garage space. You that same 1,000-square-foot house could now have a 1,600-square-foot detached garage. There are some limitations that are still in the code that would make that difficult to occur on on most of the lots in the city. You've got a thirty percent lot requirement, meaning that any structure and driveways cannot exceed eighty or thirty percent of the square footage of the lot. And also, when you get these larger structures that are 900 square feet and bigger, setbacks are increased. They've got to meet the same setback requirements as a house. So for instance, in the LDR II district, instead of being able to be five feet from the back property line, they now have to be 35 feet back from that rear property line. So it really limits the amount of space available for these larger garages. It's not to say it can't happen, but it would be a fairly unique situation, where you've got a very large lot and, you know, a smaller 1,000-square-foot house on it in order to accommodate the larger building. The other component of this ordinance amendment is a proposed change to the foundation requirements. Current code, 120 square feet of floor area and larger, the structure much must have a concrete slab. This requirement has been in effect since 1997, and it was included in a broad ordinance amendment regarding increases in size to the accessory structure ordinance. It was added at councils following council discussion. That's not clear in the staff report or the minutes why it was added. Oftentimes, something like this gets added to address a specific concern that's been brought before the council, and it's believed that this requirement would address that issue. Also, at the time, a building code required a building permit for buildings 120 square feet or larger than 120 square feet. So that might have also played into the reasoning why they put that 120 square feet as the cutoff for the foundation. Most storage buildings now, they have they're designed and constructed with a floor already in them. The size requirement that triggered the need for a building permit has been increased to 200 square feet. The proposed code would keep the concrete slab requirement for structures larger than 200 square feet. It still would be consistent with the building code. It would also add a requirement that all structures meet the tie-down requirements of the state building code. With that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Well, you said it would have to be anchored per the requirements of the building code. The state building code, city building?
Commissioner Heikle, be the state building code.
All right, we are have a public hearing in this matter. Open a public hearing in planning case seventeen dash thirty-three, an ordinance amendment modifying maximum allowed attached and detached storage garage storage space and foundation requirements. Anyone present wish to speak on this case? Anyone wish to speak on this case? Seeing none, we close the public hearing. Commission.
In planning case seventeen dash thirty-three, the Planning Commission moved to recommend approval of the attached draft ordinance amending the eighty percent of the finished floor area requirements and eliminating the concrete slab requirement.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Stevens, second by Nablock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission and will be introduced by the City Council at the December 5th meeting. All right, we're on to other business, and we have the case that was handed to us around our desk when we arrived, planning case seventeen dash eleven, consider a change in exterior elevations for Coon Rapids Chrysler Jeep. Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, Commissioners and Chair Stevens, or Chair Schwartz, excuse me.
You're getting promoted. Rock elevation. You've got a field.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Here you go.
No, thank you.
Yeah, Coon Rapids Chrysler Plymouth Jeep Chrysler, I guess it would be included in Plymouth anymore. They recently submitted a building permit for the construction of their new building over on Woodcrest Drive. Staff in reviewing the building elevations noted three changes that are on the elevations. The the most significant one is on the front elevation. This component here, which is the entrance to the Chrysler end of the dealership, has been changed and eliminated at this point in time. Right now, they're just proposing a canopy over that entrance. They've got two entrances to the building, one for the Jeep end of the building and one for the Chrysler Dodge end of the building. Right now, and it was indicated in the applicant's narrative, Chrysler is in the middle of redesigning their coming up with a new portal for their entrance for their new Chrysler buildings. They haven't landed on a final design yet. So as an interim, the applicant is proposing more of just a canopy over that main entrance. And then, when they do come in with their final design, they would add that on to to this area right here. By doing this and just having the canopy, a couple things, it makes it easier to incorporate that new portal when when it is approved, when Chrysler does announce it and make it public. And it really it makes it easier structurally to be able to do that. If they if they were to have this in here at this point, it'd be more difficult to add the new portal structurally to the building. The other changes are on this elevation here. As you can see, they've got windows up above, kind of an upper level here. This is the car wash. This is a shop area, and this is a service door going into the building. Those are eliminated on the proposed plan, reason being, this door was raised and made higher, so the the mechanism for the service door would be where that proposed window was going to be. The two down here, where the car wash is, they found that it would be very difficult to maintain those windows in a car wash. So that's why they were eliminated there. And this one here that's over the shop area, it's been replaced with a skylight. So that's the reason for those windows being removed. The other change was in this area right here. This is an area of the shop or the building where it's 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 a photo booth, where they take pictures of the new cars for promotional purposes. That window has been eliminated and replaced with a service door. On the original plan, cars would be pulled into that photo booth from the inside of the building. On the new plan, they they enter the booth from the outside with the closed interior. It also helps them get the lighting requirements that they need for the photos, and they don't have the ambient light coming in from the outside. So those are the three changes, and we were just looking to get some commission feedback and just to bring it to bring it to your attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I guess I'm just maybe I'm confused, but, you know, if I'm looking at this correctly, you know, one of the things that is different between the approved plan and the proposed plan is that the, you know, there's there's like a height difference between the the entrance that has, you know, Coon Rapids on it and the rest of the building that makes the building not quite so static as you look across it.
Correct.
And on the proposed plan, that's eliminated in favor of just a canopy. And I'm confused as to what you're saying. Are you saying that they're redoing their design and the expectation is that they'll change this somewhere down the road? But would it add that variation that, you know?
Yep, I I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Stevens.
Because that seems like a pretty significant structural change that they're unlikely to add later, right? Like adding up?
In in speaking with the architect, they don't know what this new design is going to be. Their concern was, you know, in two years when they come up, they didn't want to be the last in line with the old elevation and then be stuck with that when the new elevations come out and new poles come out in a year or two. It was explain that, you know, internally, structurally, there's different structural elements to that, their their current portal design. That would make it more difficult to tear that out and incorporate a new design. They don't know yet, Coon Rapids Chrysler and the architect, don't know yet what that final will be. It may be that it has the bump up in it. It may be more along the lines of what Jeep has, emphasizing more color and and material as opposed to differentiating with height.
Well, I I just my feedback then would be that I'm not really comfortable with the idea of just going on faith that whatever they come up with will be, you know, two years down the road, we'll be happy with. And that I'm not really thrilled with the idea of this static bland elevation that they're proposing here. And I don't know that it's entirely consistent with what we ask for the for buildings to have something that shows some architectural variation and height differentiation as you move across the building. Maybe we I would be satisfied with what they're talking what they've done with Jeep with the the color variation and the texture variation, which I think is what satisfies on the Jeep end of the building. But the idea that we're just going to kind of hope that that's what happens is pretty unpalatable to me.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Harlecker, I I again, as I've done earlier this evening, agreed wholeheartedly with Commissioner Stevenson, having that bump up, so it breaks up that what would, I guess, be called a roof line, is a very attractive feature of that building. And by eliminating it and just going with a long expanse of even even roof line, I believe detracts considerably from the very attractive building that they had previously approved or presented to us and that we had approved. And I also don't like the idea of just leaving it in limbo with the happenstance that maybe we'll get something comparable. If we had any control over the matter, I guess I I would not be voting for approving the modification if in fact we were we were voting.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
I have a question for Mr. Harlecker. Is this an accurate statement? Throughout the process of updating the building elevations, we have ensured that all city code requirements continue to be met. The previously approved variance for the front showroom elevation to be allowed more than 35 percent glass is still required. Is that accurate?
Yeah, they still have excess glass. Yep.
So does that kind of fall in with the requested action by by your apartment? No action by the Planning Commission is required at this time?
A formal action is what I was.
Formal action.
What I'm going to plan on doing is taking your comments back to the architect and say, depends on what you come up with tonight, either go with this or bring back the Planning Commission-approved elevation.
Okay.
I was not staff wasn't comfortable approving the change that they're that's being proposed.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Casey.
I'm willing to bet that Chrysler probably wants a stellar look to their new portal also. And I'm I'm glad to hear we don't have to do anything with it, but that's that's my I think they'll lean in that direction. They'll look for something outstanding and bring us back maybe something else later. I'm comfortable not doing anything.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Harlecker.
Commissioner Heikle.
Does this delay their plans or the construction? Will it delay their construction or will it?
I'm not sure, Commissioner Heikle, what this will do to their timeline, how difficult it will be to add the approved port. it will be to add the approved portal to the plans that they submitted. We can still continue with the permit review process, that won't get hung up. Building will probably have, it depends on what sort of structural changes they have to make to accommodate the taller portal at that location.
Mr. Chair? I would also agree then that going along with what we talked about earlier with another project, that this accent does add considerably to the look of the building. And I would, would be my opinion that we should try to keep that if at all possible.
I agree.
Commissioner Stevens, was there anything else that you had other than just agreeing?
No, I'm still, with the windows being gone, I know that they're putting a skylight in, but that still takes away so much of the look. I mean, I understand if they have to raise the garage door, but the other three, I don't So, because it's not, I'm sure it's hard to keep the windows clean in a car wash too, but I've seen them. They are getting washed from the inside, so that, those would be my two comments for that anyway.
So, Mr. Harlecker, that's kind of feedback.
So what I'm hearing, Chair Schwartz and commissioners from the commission, is that you want to see the approved elevation with respect to the front elevation of that portal, but are okay with the other changes? The windows and the access to the photo booth?
Mr. Chair? I would also agree with Commissioner Stevens that it does detract, taking out those windows does detract from that, from the attractiveness on that side as well.
I would agree as well.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Stevenson?
I would say that I don't think I have a problem with the photo booth entrance.
No, not the photo booth.
No, the photo booth, I don't believe is a problem, but the windows on those other two sides.
Mr. Chair, I'll just, I'll add in a comment to, the photo booth is, it's part of its functionality. If they need to eliminate that outdoor lighting source, that's fine with me. As far as the other two windows, it's a car wash. I'm not, I don't have a problem with it. From the look of that, that's its functionality, is a car wash, so I'm okay with that elimination of those windows and this addition of the skylight.
The issue however would be, yes, it's just a car wash, but it detracts from the appearance of that side wall. Doesn't matter what's inside the wall. It's the exterior vision of that, of that wall, removing that, the windows, just leaves it too plain and blank.
Too plain. I hear you. I hear you. I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I mean, I don't know how other people feel. If they came back with a proposal that removed the windows but otherwise broke up that expanse, provide some definition and some contrast, that might be workable.
Right.
I certainly am, you know, reasonable enough to understand that a car wash might present some challenges with windows.
Sure.
And I imagine that there's a solution to that problem. I just think, you know, large static spaces are unattractive to look at, and that's why we like to, that's why we ask for things to break up those large stack spaces, and that's why it's part of the code.
A big car wash sign maybe.
Blinking neon pink and green?
Neon. We're not negotiators.
We're not negotiators.
We're not negotiators.
And we have no say, so.
And we're not designing.
Mr. Stevens?
On the, Scott, on the side, have they added something to that or is that just?
To where?
Well, the, you've got it down here.
Where the windows were?
Yeah, where the windows were, did they have something added there then?
Well, what they've done is they've, as you can see from here, they've got.
Stone?
More of a distinction on the tip-up panels, you know, these are more of a smoother, this is more of a sandblasted finish to it.
Okay, so they did, they didn't just leave it?
It's not just a flat surface.
Okay.
Surface changes that differentiate that band from the rest of it.
Are there color changes with that or just the same color?
I suspect it'll have the appearance of different color because the texture's different. So the light will reflect off it a little different, so it'll be different shade.
Okay. Because that looks okay. I just thought if it was going to be a flat, you know, wall, like, you know, just removing the windows and leaving it, but this is what Commissioner Stevenson was talking about, having something a little different, and that's fine. But just to leave it a blank wall would not be fine.
Is there enough feedback for you, Mr. Harlecker?
I'm still unclear about the windows. I'm seeing, I'm hearing different, different comments from the commissioner. Now that we've talked a little bit more about, well, they are providing a little more texture to that side of the building, the conversation's saying, well, maybe not having the windows is okay then.
Well, I think that's a good observation.
Chair and commissioner, I'm going to have to go back to the builder here and say, all right, your proposed elevations are not what the commission approved, or proposed changes are okay, go ahead and build it that way.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Stevenson?
Chair, can you clarify that elevation? What does that face in?
This faces, that's the east, so.
It faces the Ford dealership, I believe.
I believe that faces, I think the Ford dealership.
Yep.
All right.
East would.
The east would be the Ford dealership.
Ford dealership.
Yep. I don't know, to me, I don't feel really strongly about this, but I, it is like a mile of thick expanse. I agree that the texture, it's certainly preferable to just a wall of precast concrete, right?
Right.
To have the differentiation between what is going, the texture in the middle on the plane on top and the bottom. I just think that the same thing all the way across that building is what we generally try to avoid when we're evaluating buildings. I can think of a lot of buildings that we have commented on or instructed people to change, break up the side of it. If they, you know, came back with this proposal but had fixed the front of the building, I might be persuadable in order to vote for it. I don't think it's the worst thing, but it would be better if they broke it up.
Right, definitely.
A possible solution would be putting in a false window, I mean, just something that looks like a window. Doesn't have to be a window.
Right. What if they do some type of, I know this is kind of design on the fly here, but if they did some sort of imprint, those are precast panels, they can do anything with those things. What if they put like some sort of imprint indentation where those windows were to give it some relief?
They'll more than likely hang a banner on it anyway.
Car wash, it says car wash. The banner can say car wash.
Just something to break up.
All right, I think, I think we've given you enough.
Okay.
Feedback for that.
Feedback or agree.
Anything else under other business? Mr. Harlecker, anything you have for next month at this time?
At this point, it's a fairly light agenda. We've got an ordinance amendment that's being proposed by an applicant who wants to locate veterinary clinic in the regional shopping district up in Riverdale, in that little center where Panera Bread is, on that building pad. At this point, the code does not allow pet sales and something else grooming, but it doesn't allow veterinary clinics. So they're questioning the code change for that. And then we're also looking at a request for dimensional flexibility to allow some larger signs on that Circuit City site. We've got a home outlet business that wants to go in there and put signs up where Circuit City was. Sign code has changed since then, and so they want to put up signs that were similar to Circuit City but exceed the current size requirements. I think so they're a little over. You're allowed 200 feet, square feet per facade, and then each one of those on that triangular piece over the outage, each sign will be 200 square feet, I think, or 150 square feet. So anyway, they'll exceed the code requirement for that. It's in the River Rapids overlay district, so they got the option of dimensional flexibility, and they're applying for that. So we've got two items on for next month.
All right, thank you. Commission, anything else?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Means adjourned.